Trying to get in the car. She wanted to come. Just got off work.
Very, very young couple.
They look like little babies. I don't think she's the one. And then, I don't know them. They're not from here.
From here, because I know they had, he had a place.
I wouldn't know if that is. No, you won't know them, huh? They're, they're from another town. They were really, really young.
They looked well.
She looked young and didn't see him. You guys have a lot more people back there though. It gets a lot.
Oh, yeah, we open windows on there.
It takes it's a lot back.
I miss you. The street with the officer. It looks pretty. We pay for it. Once was enough, okay? I'm gonna haul you to jail, we'll take you home. No, I just see where an agency, they advertise, the officer. And you sign that, and then they go to their house, maybe a lot, take them to the bar. About two drinks, like this person I had. Yeah. Officer, like that person over here, one of these guys, did a drink. And then they run off. Practically, walk people. And what's done? And my gas, not the pleasure. Your total bill is five hundred and something dollars. Yo. Oh, yeah. Let's go, where we at? I'm driving. Yeah. Yo. Yeah.
That was the salary, that was the ordinance last year we went by.
Okay.
It was basically two thousand.
I like you just left.
Much like I just left every day. Yeah. You have two days off though, so. Mm-hmm. Looks like mission.
Sorry, sorry about your luck.
I mean, I don't think, yeah, my strap is a little stupid. Just one minute.
Like called me, you know. You have your own call.
Mayor Crane.
Here.
Councilmember Copenhagen.
Here.
Holser.
Here.
Easter.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
And Randalls.
Here.
We're not approving any of that, so.
Nope.
Okay, this is the, the salary ordinance hearing. I have the proposed, Lynn has the proposed salary ordinances. Does anybody have any questions?
I know last year I thought about, uh, by something that we could tell what has changed, if anything. If there's anything going on that we needed to know about. Instead of doing, I've never agreed with, across the board. I, I think each department should have some sort of, uh, reason why they're getting each, each department's getting raised. That maybe you would talk, had some good from, uh, any department heads or any individuals that, uh, thought, you know, that their, their increases should be at a certain standard.
I, this is pretty much a cost of living for, um, you know, everybody.
Which was, that's the percentage, because the cost of living for next year is estimated, I know, uh, between, you know, two point eight and three point one.
This is, um, for example, um, uh, Gene and Tyler, theirs would be about three percent. Casey's would be, or Greg's would be about, well, Casey's would be about two point eight. Greg's would be a little bit more, uh, about three point two, three point three. Linda and Rhonda would be, um, probably closer to four.
So it was about two grand for full time.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's hard, hard to say that we don't have longevity pay, so. It's, uh, you know, Linda and Rhonda have been here forty-two, forty-three years and.
How long has it been since we have, have touched, um, fire pay? Because I noticed that didn't change here.
Uh, changed from last year.
It's the same.
It's the same as last year.
Same as last year. It changed last year.
It changed.
From the year before.
Police chief did.
What's that?
I think the police chief, or the fire chief did, yeah.
Yeah, it was.
But did fireman.
Yeah, it, well, it was four hundred the year before. Last year it was five hundred. This year, five hundred. When we get, when we get some that show up, you know, it's hard, it's hard. Judge, I mean, there's, you know, Gene and, you know, Gene's been here, what, seven? And his, you know, for, for their work, um, they're, you, you know, they, there's, uh, people that are making forty to fifty thousand. But that's, you know, it's one of those things. They do a good job, but, you know.
Forty to fifty dollars an hour.
Forty, forty to fifty dollars an hour. You knew, you knew what I meant.
So you consider the lineman, the journeyman? Not journeyman. You don't have a card.
No, because I didn't do the Department of Labor great work for everybody else.
Is it, is that because, uh, of the increase we would have to be current with the lineman, the journeyman lineman, as a journeyman?
I, they're, they're doing the job, the, the same job that, you know.
Well, I know, but they're doing classes and they're, they're, you know.
Yeah, they're doing the same thing that.
We're, we're paying for classes.
You're, you're not taking classes anymore, are you, Gene? He's, he's done.
So, so if you decide that you want to go somewhere else and you could make forty to fifty dollars an hour as well?
Yes.
Well, that, that's kind of scary, because.
Yeah.
I mean, I hate to lose either one of those guys.
Yes, I know.
So, is, is there a reason we can't, uh, bump Gene up to forty? And, and then Tyler up to where he should be about thirty-six, maybe?
I, um.
And that's, that's an average. That's the average for, for what, what they qualify for. Am I, am I thinking that right?
Maybe, maybe we could go do, um, have we got any salary ordinance in the last year?
Well, we, we put all our stuff in, but I don't know that we printed it off, though. I'd have to.
I've got some salary comparisons here from, uh, whatever website this is. Gateway for, for here compared to, like, Beatersburg. So for two, the year two thousand twenty-four, it had Gene at seventy-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars. Tyler at seventy-seven thousand dollars, seventy-seven dollars. Jeff Lowe of Beatersburg, eighty-seven thousand ninety-five dollars. Justin Williams, Beatersburg, eighty-four thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars.
I can tell you right now, Gene's, they're, they're the two highest employees. They've made more money than anybody else in the city. But that's because of overtime and. Because of being on call.
Okay, yeah, but if it was just their regular salary. And I know that a lineman makes a lot more, and that's because when they get called out.
Be reflective in those pays, right?
Excuse me, I, I assume so. Because I mean, if you're, we're talking thirty-four thousand, or thirty-four dollars an hour, that should only be about a seventy thousand dollar.
Yeah.
A year max.
Yeah.
Salary. So I assume these others have overtime in them as well. I mean, I don't know how comparable the hours of overtime will work, but, I mean, you're looking at, at least a six to seven thousand dollar difference between here and the, probably the average of Beatersburg.
Jeff Lowe, is Jeff Lowe the superintendent?
And then you have a guy on Rockville, ninety-three thousand six hundred and fifteen. Uh, Rockville was Brett Britton.
That's the guy you said.
Yeah, he went to school with me, graduated from, that's the same how I did.
And then I, I had for Marshall, two linemen, eighty-two thousand five hundred, eighty-eight thousand forty dollars. And then I, I was also going to question the, the, just the fifty cent difference between, because it's a four-year apprenticeship you serve.
Yeah.
And you're in your third year, is that correct?
And, and I'll tell you why that was, because Tyler has, what have you worked, um, sixteen, seventeen years?
Seventeen years through AMRIN.
Through AMRIN.
Level fifty-one.
For, for AMRIN themselves, for, for the tree.
I was a contractor, I was on the forestry side, but we were planning to handle the line.
Okay.
So he's had all the safety, you know, more safety than what, probably about as much safety as anybody else has. And, uh, that was one of our big things, was how much did you make in an hour for them? Okay, so he made thirty-two seventy, two years ago, three years ago. Almost three years ago, so, you know, he's not that much more than that over three years, so. And.
A lot of those, a lot of those places have four, four guys too.
Yeah, yeah. And we know Rock. Pardon?
I would take what I'm making now, I'll be fine with it, if you just get a superintendent, but.
Because you're doing the scheduling and the actual job of a superintendent. Is that?
I mean, somebody else does.
Right, and you've never been caught for that either.
But it's not because he hasn't been offered the position.
Right.
For superintendent, right? You're, you're doing it without the pay, but it's not because you haven't been offered the superintendent. You choose not to have that and would rather have a superintendent. In that position. Especially since we're just down to two of you.
And, and we do pay Dwayne, how much?
I think it's thirty-seven.
I, I don't remember. He does the safety class as he comes help.
And then this.
And he helps with, with jobs too.
It's not a small amount, but it's not a huge amount of money.
Yeah.
He's the one who just trains, right? Come and train.
Well, he goes out and helps him, he's helped him on a couple or three projects. Helped on the school transformer and, and the three place, convergence out of town. And the pole over here behind the, uh, buildings that caught on fire and.
With all the stuff we do, I mean, trying to, they seem to listen for flags, because of decorations, I think he's done banners.
Yeah.
Tree thing, trees between the sidewalk and the street. Getting the high clearance on the streets, getting the line clearance on the lines.
Oh, I know.
That's just.
I, I'm not against you guys or anything. I did it across the board because you're the highest paid employees. What, you know, I think Casey should be here, you know? I mean, he's, he's, he exceeds what, you know, for our size town, what most street superintendent or, you know, water superintendent, but, you know, it's, you know.
We just added forty-some houses out here, Tyler, we're supposed to be adding forty-some more.
Yeah. And, and we're still at two feet there.
Where's this money?
Yeah.
It's, we're getting, making more money.
And, and Casey did help out there some, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess the point is that, you know, like, I would like to see him up to where their competency, where they're not going to go somewhere, they're not looking to go somewhere. I mean, I don't know their ages, it's none of my business, you know, but if you decided you wanted to change jobs and, and leave, you even have the qualifications to do that. So, I, I don't.
Absolutely. Are you going somewhere, Gene?
You can't ask me that, I mean.
No, I know that. And Tyler, he loves us.
I, I think if Gene's done the schooling, I think we need to make sure the paperwork's filled out for him to get the journeymans. I mean, that, that's just the same as.
Is that up?
Going to school and getting your degree.
What? Clint said what? Clint said what?
He didn't want to do paperwork.
Who said that?
Clint. The Department of Labor paperwork is all we needed, certainly my.
He never said anything to me about that.
I'm just saying, but. We just kept trying to get it, it was like, time kept.
I don't know. He never said anything to you, did he?
I've never been approached about anything.
Class of the journeyman card, except me.
Are you kidding me?
Yeah. No, mine.
And it's up to us. Why would we not do that?
I've never been presented.
Clint never mentioned it.
Yeah, reading so.
And, and I'm sorry, I do have another question. So if we do this, if we approve this for the third year, thirty-four fifty, is that going to be set as a precedent for that level for a while? Because then you're still, I mean, I appreciate Tyler's experience for bumping that up.
We would bump it up every year.
From thirty-four fifty?
Oh, for a, for a third year.
For a third year apprentice.
Oh, yeah.
And so what about a fourth year apprentice? Because it's a four-year apprenticeship, correct?
Yeah.
So you're, I mean, you're still only talking fifty cents difference between a journeyman and a third year apprentice.
That, you know.
Well, that, I mean, that's what I'm asking, is that going to set the precedent for that?
No.
Uh, hourly rate?
No, I don't know what, did, did Clint not put down a fourth year? And he did it? He never had that. Clint wrote it up. Before, before Gene was hired, he hired in at, what, seventeen, eighteen dollars an hour? So he's almost doubled.
But he's done the schooling as well. I went through a five-year apprenticeship. I started at like thirty percent.
Yeah.
And ended up at a hundred percent.
Yeah.
And the difference between the fifth year for my apprenticeship and a journeyman was fifteen percent.
Yeah.
So that's, I mean, to me, the fifty cents.
Oh, I, I have no problem with that, it's just that, you know, I guess if it's a, if everybody gets a, you know, we can't give everybody, uh, twen- twenty percent raise.
You shouldn't have to. It should go by department. I mean, you know, these guys do something different than these guys.
Yeah, oh, I agree.
Office, I mean, it should not be all across the board, because if, since you've done that for years, that will be the position we're in, and it's, and I know you say that it's working, but to me, it's not working.
Yeah.
It's just not.
Somebody want to make that motion?
For what?
That they think that they want, want to raise Gene and Tyler up?
By, by classification or change their classification? Or, are you talking about changing the pay for the classification?
Yes, change the hourly classification or the hourly pay.
Which should be competitive.
Yeah.
Which is how much?
Well.
What's, what's, what's considered competitive?
Competitive, well.
For the hourly pay.
See, you don't go by the town size, you go by the kilowatt hours sold.
Yeah. And that's probably.
Well, because I, I would make a motion to make the wage.
Why, why don't we, why don't we do this? Because that, I didn't know that, Gene. How, how is it, how is it gauged by the kilowatt hours sold?
Yeah.
Okay, and what else?
You're saying not by the number of residents.
Not by the number of meters, meters. Okay.
Which ours should be increasingly, pretty significantly, if we're adding eighty-some houses, correct? Which ours will increase significantly with the addition of approximately eighty, eighty-five houses.
It has to be rewritten. It has to be passed by November first.
It's Saturday. Does, does it have to be advertised again?
It has to just be signed off on.
And we can't just. And we can't just amend it?
And, no, you can, let me think, you can lower, once it's been accepted, you can lower the amount, you cannot raise it.
Okay.
At all, so if we're gonna change it, we can go, you can go in and pop those numbers into your computer, reprint, and then we can vote on it as such, but you're gonna have to come up with, what are you thinking these numbers need to be? And are you just talking about the electric department only? I mean, everybody else is good, everybody else.
Yeah, I think we should be talking about each department anyway.
Which goes back to the employee handbook and to Randy's point about doing evaluations, um, if, if we can do a performance bonus or something along those lines, I think that would be fair as well, and it wouldn't just be across the board, it would be based on performance.
And equal on their base rate, not, not a statement. It'd be on their base rate.
Right, it would, it would, the base rate would change.
So, so are we looking at dollar amounts, is that what we're looking at next? What to raise it up to?
Yeah, you're looking at your journeyman lineman at thirty-five dollars an hour, which is what you are right.
We need to add a fourth year in there.
Fourth-year apprentice.
That's the problem, how you squeeze that in within the fifty cent range.
You, you adjust that.
You adjust the third-year apprentice lineman to thirty-five dollars an hour?
Are you a third-year, Tyler?
No, he's second, second start.
You're considered a second-year, okay, but we gotta, we gotta give you, you know.
Well, he makes more than twenty-six dollars an hour, right?
Yeah, I'm not gonna.
I mean, I don't know what your base rate is right now, I don't do payroll anymore, but I could go look.
I thought he was at thirty-four.
He's at thirty-three fifty.
Thirty-three fifty.
Last year.
Tyler's at.
No, no, Gene, Gene was at thirty-four.
Okay, so he's thirty-three fifty, okay, and Gene makes thirty-four.
But, because he had sixteen, seventeen years' experience, you know.
And I, I understand it, I appreciate that, right, I, that, I, I get that, but that's what I was asking, if once we set this pri- or this wage for a third-year apprentice, is that set in stone for, I mean, you're not gonna be able to go down in the future, are you, for that?
No, no.
So then, so then you got a third-year, thirty-four fifty, we don't even have a fourth-year on here, and you have a journeyman only making fifty cents more in a third-year, that's.
Yeah.
I guess I have a fourth-year, fourth-year line, and you're gonna have to decide what your ultimate goal is to pay him, I guess, first, then.
What do you have to do, you know what we have to do to, for the journeyman?
I'd have to find, I'd find out from Dwayne.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, just bring the paperwork in, I've never gotten any names, so.
And then you.
Did Clint even have a card? Did Clint have a card? I mean, I've worked under, what, four superintendents now, and I've never seen any paperwork come through this office ever, ever in my life.
I don't think they ever did.
Claude Delver and, yeah, Allen and, been a million of them, I don't know.
Okay, what if we set the journeyman at forty dollars an hour? And then the fourth-year.
Is, is thirty, right, thirty-eight out of the range on the fourth?
Fourth-year, I think it should be.
The third-year is at thirty-six, maybe?
That's.
That's a huge jump already from second to third.
Yeah, yeah.
And I have heard that other places do like a, some sort of a five-year contract, because, you know, to, to make sure we're keeping these guys, but if we're gonna be competitive. We're gonna be competitive with others than.
So, city pay for the schooling, I guess, is another question.
We do, we do, and reverse them for everything?
How about we stay at twenty-three, twenty-six, thirty-four, fifty, thirty-seven, and forty?
Thirty-seven and forty?
Yeah.
I'd take that motion.
So you, so Gene is a journeyman line, just Tyler's gone.
Are you a, are you a journeyman?
Not until you get the paper.
That's what I thought. Okay.
I feel like we've had this conversation before.
So you're gonna be thirty-seven dollars an hour. Till we get the paperwork done.
Well, this is, this doesn't go into effect till January first, so you're gonna have to pay for it by then.
Yeah.
This is gonna affect January first, twenty-twenty-six, we're working on twenty-twenty-six now.
So we, we don't need a motion yet, we just need the paper done.
He's going to go change it on his computer real quick, but you're gonna talk about other things first, so, he said about departments.
Yeah, don't do that, yeah, don't do that, yeah.
Yeah, we don't need a motion for it until.
So we have the one in front of us that we need.
Yeah, them all at once. Yeah, I, I know the kind of work and training and everything else these firemen do, and to, I don't think five hundred bucks even comes close to covering their own expenses.
No problem with that, Brad, because the budget is made out, and it's been four hundred for a long time. I mean, if, if we could get more people, it'd be great, to pay them even more than, you know, but pay them more, but, you know. We had more of them, we paid.
I guarantee you the money isn't what's attracting or detracting, I mean, it's right now, it's, it's the service, but I, I think they're, they're paying out.
They get, they get a car stipend and they get a clothing stipend, when we run into more checks, um, the last week of December, probably just once a year, they get a car stipend. And Garth turns that in, some of them only get fifty percent of the pay because they don't attend everything, he needs to make sure that they're paid a whole amount if they don't attend. And like, if they're only, if they quit three months in, they have to pay the clothing, the car allowance. It, it's just, I, it's, it's the new ordinance for city policies, it's in there, it's the same, and it's like, one hundred, I think, for car and maybe two hundred for clothing.
It's two hundred and two hundred.
But they don't seem never, I mean, Garth gets it, I mean, like. But the time, that means twenty-six, just to have to. I don't know who's over fire, but as far as the council, but you could talk to them, like, if they have an amount for this year, for clothing and salaries, you know, if there was, they didn't have enough people to fulfill that amount. You know, Garth could make a recommendation, and he feels maybe somebody did a, you know, really good job, showed up for everything, and he could say, pay them two hundred more, or a hundred more, something like that, he just has to listen to payroll. Cause there's a, there's an amount in there.
And Randy was asking about the, talking about the money across the board, just a flat dollar amount, seven percent, and he was saying the cost of living's gonna be two to, what, two point seven to three percent? Looking at these numbers, Shannon and Scott are only like one percent increase.
No, they're more than that.
Uh, going from sixty-nine-five to seventy-one-five, it's one point oh-three percent.
Like two thousand, like sixty-nine-five.
I'm sorry, I.
Two point eight.
Sorry, I did that wrong. I'm stuck, sorry.
It's in the range.
It's okay.
When we talked about our police department last year, I know it was a big, a big row, but, uh, we got some money. Got a little bigger.
Here's the way it is, Randy, so, we got, we can't compare to the counties.
No.
But we are the highest-paid city, I believe, uh, our size, Attica makes, makes more, yeah, but our, ours.
Why is that? Why, I mean, aren't we, are, are we, what's the population difference?
They're slightly, they're less than ten percent.
They're big, they're, they're probably, I don't know what they list you at now, thirty-three hundred, thirty-two hundred, thirty-three hundred.
That's about the balance.
They're about ten percent.
We're twenty-six, twenty-seven, okay.
So, and, and like other, like, you, you can't compare, like, Petersburg and.
They're, they're different service.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are twenty-four dollars.
And you got that questionable pound on your shoulder as well.
Based on the way they're doing, it does rate, I mean, doesn't, for these two, it keeps them right in the range.
And that was just estimated, you're two point.
Oh, well, yeah, I mean, cause you're, you're forecasting forward, so, yeah, of course it is.
It's about three and a half to three, three point six on about everybody else.
Is, is it anywhere in our future that we could do by department, or, I know, I, I mean, you know, the.
It come down to what Senate Bill One does next year, as far as the, you know, um, uh, their property ta- they're talking about property tax reform. About all of it.
Senate Bill One?
Yeah, and property tax reform in general.
So, um, I know it's still gonna be the topic of issue for legislation for next session, um, the governor did call a special session for redistricting. I think it's gonna take place on Monday next week, I don't know if they're gonna address property tax reform in that special session or not, but, um, the concern everywhere is the reduction in funds coming into local government, whether it's city or county, but it's not gonna affect until twenty-twenty-seven.
Right.
And so, like.
So what's the budget next year?
And as we are considering all of this.
Yeah.
Everything, it's very dependent upon property tax reform, that is. And there's, there's no clearing of property taxes that.
So, he, he may want us to try and adopt a local income tax to make up for, you know, additional wheel tax or something, you know.
So I understand that that's done at a, at a county level at this point, isn't it, because the size of our community?
It is now, but they're talking about community, it's kinda putting.
True, but I think that has to be.
Putting the onus on us.
I think right now that has to be passed at a county level.
No, it, well, what he's talking about in Senate Bill One is that we would adopt it, that the municipality would adopt it, cities and towns would adopt it. It's gonna, it could get messy, and if they do what, you know, Larry Grant in Attica called me, he said, he'd been told that it's gonna cost him one point two million dollars. Well, if it costs us one point two million, for Shannon and Scott and most of the others would be, you know.
Yeah, we'll be one out.
You're gonna be working twenty-four hours a day, seven days.
They can't do that to us, surely, but that's what they're talking about.
Yeah, that'll hit the family, that'll hit the family estate before it happens.
Yeah, so.
Well, and that's the uproars, because, you know, property owners don't wanna pay the government rent to live in their housing, but that's helping fund. So, really, the only ones that are really upset about the property tax reform, or, you know, doing away with property tax, are the elected officials and the people who work for the cities and the counties, and so.
Out of the school.
Yeah, the schools, the schools, they'll suffer too. They will lose money, so it'll be, it'll be hard, they've gotta find something to make it up, so.
Well, that's not gonna affect next year, it certainly will the year after, we've gotta get answers to that.
It won't affect us next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be twenty-twenty-seven.
But it should be on our radar, so that we can prepare for the future.
We may, we may have a long discussion before budget next year, depending on what gets handled.
Depending on what they do, we'll know.
Yeah, and I, and I know not a cities and counties are already trimming budgets in preparation for twenty-twenty-seven, so.
Randy, in season, how many hours a week are you spending?
Well, I can give you the last year's hours. Which, which estimated that paid about six dollars and forty-nine cents, but, you know, I didn't say anything.
Even, even at forty hours a week, that puts him down underneath the class of the employee, which.
For five hundred dollars, the taxes, ten thirty-eight an hour, I didn't say anything.
But it, that, that interferes with the work that he's doing.
Well, if you, if you had the help, it would be better, because you can't work sixty hours a week.
You, you didn't have to pay anybody part-time last year or this year, and my suggestion was if, if that was supposed to be the part-time guy, I'll just take that too.
Yeah.
You just said yes.
That's what I heard.
One way they handle.
That doesn't exactly work, that.
Well, I was putting in time and a half, making time, so, anyway, I, I'm, I'm not gonna complain about it, and I, I'm pretty sure if, you know, if it comes up, I will do it one more year down there, but it would sure be nice to have some help other than people that don't wanna be there, which is the. What am I thinking?
Community action. Oh, they don't wanna work.
They, they don't wanna be there, they can't, you know, you just like.
Well, and to pay him weekly and to pay an assistant who, there's no telling how many hours they'll ever have to pay them annually, that doesn't even.
You need to have two people, cause it looks too, when you're going out on the trail, you should have two people doing it.
That classification, that, that assistant classification, either needs. Yeah.
Since Donna Crowder and Camilla did it.
But he, he needs help, he's busting his ass.
And our equipment's taking a punch on that too, so, yeah.
It'll trickle down too.
Bring more bills to live, and she's like, what the hell are you doing for our equipment? So, yeah, I appreciate that, but it's, it's whatever, of course, I can't, I can't load on that anyway, but. Year, I think it's around fifteen-five, fifteen, thirteen, thirteen. Year, I think it's around fifteen-five, fifteen, thirteen, thirteen-five or fifteen-five for in-season at the park.
It's probably fourteen.
That's what.
Fourteen, fourteen, fifteen, fifteen-five, yeah.
Yeah.
You see anything else?
If you're gonna go in and clean it all up on the computer, if you would, the whole bit there with the electric, uh, electrical apartment. Because the others start from the high and then go down, and that one goes, starts below and then goes up, if you could just flip it.
Say that again.
Like here, starts on the high dollar figure and then comes down, but when you get to the electric, it goes the other direction. You could just flip it if you're gonna go in and redo it. If you're gonna retithe it first year.
Oh, oh.
Just to be consistent.
Did anybody have anything else?
Gonna present both ways, you guys will vote on which one you wanna.
It's this time of year.
This one, this time of year's hard, there's usually about four.
Cause she's got, she's got four, and they did, doesn't lie.
But we're gonna have to decide like the soccer teams. We we wrote it up as she was in it last time with the hundred dollar tournament and twenty-five dollars per team for a dollar.
It could be.
Not a elite time tournament, and in some softball, baseball, soccer, we wrote it up as just the hundred dollar tournament. That's it, without the twenty-five dollars per team. Giving you those options. So we forget that way you can vote on the trade.
What is it?
What is it?
What?
We don't know. What is it?
What is the percentage of the raise?
What did we get?
You got a two thousand dollar raise.
Okay, so you guys will figure, okay, well, two thousand dollars.
Two thou, yeah.
We're trying to see. We didn't wanna short you. But all the cla, every classification that you've got moved up by that dollar figure. So each classification.
Yes, all, everyone.
For those people on hourly, it adjusts it by hours, cause it's roughly two thousand hours a year. For a full-time employee.
Any other questions?
I just wanna know what the, what we're talking about.
Once they sign it, I'll give it copy to you over.
Any concerns?
Officers looking at them in other places. Cause we're not competitive. But I, I mean, don't get me wrong, understanding the economy and all that good stuff, but that's the issues that. We're gonna have the same issues that Attica did for a while, they got all their stuff. We're just gonna be a recycling place.
And I remember we talked about um, signing a contract with with them to stay on for.
That begins, I believe, we'd start doing that this year.
Yes.
Twenty-six, we'd start.
Okay.
And if they, like, we kinda thought we were gonna lose an officer that had just gone through the academy and. That person that hired him would have had us, had to have paid the city back for his um, schooling.
So, I mean, honestly.
But now we need contracts for a new hire.
We can bring a separate, different time, but it needs something nice for Taylor to write something up for her department. Assign a contract.
Yeah, when, and we should follow through with that, especially next year, when everything goes into effect. Yeah. Yeah, so.
He's got plenty of time to write it.
Wow.
Yeah, cause I showed you that from the last put-trader school, where that became an effect for the police departments, where you could. Make the contracts, and up to three years, whoever hires them, if you sign a contract for more than three years, they can't leave here.
Can we get that stuff to Taylor so we can get on it the next meeting? If if you don't mind, if you need help, let me know.
So really, do you really not planning on hiring anybody besides just having two of them? Well, they could, and had out for a long time, and nobody ever was qualified, or kinda, I don't know, didn't want it for the pay. I mean, most of them want hundreds of thousands a year to come be a superintendent.
Wanted it, but you didn't give it to him, so.
Who?
The rat house waiting for it.
But wasn't there a reason? Wasn't there a reason? It was something about illness with his. I don't know.
His wife was needs to take care of, but like he needed to go.
He said he had to leave a lot, he.
Or I think you had that job because he was close to.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was, I know Todd Highs reached out to me. At one time. And I don't know, I think he came in, talked to you guys a long time. I think he filled out an application, yeah. Yeah, I'm not very prepared for this situation right here, I have my actual council folder. It probably wouldn't. Start with schooling. I'll have it on the website.
No, yeah, that's the problem, yeah, we gotta start discussing that line through August. Yeah, cause the only thing you can do is move somebody around within classification, otherwise.
I concur.
Before she became clerk again. If they hired somebody and salary, they would make the same, I mean, as she was, working thirty-something years again. Until, until they came up with each other.
I just printed off, read the sign.
The only thing you guys will have to do is let us know what years you are, because we don't know, I mean, Shannon won't know when you become a third year, you know. I mean, you're.
He's getting paid as a third year.
Third year now, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay. Yeah, just find out tomorrow who, where that paperwork comes from and bring it in for.
But he's gonna get paid as a third year now, yeah, same as you have. Right, you'll be a third year.
I need a motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll make that motion.
I second it.
Okay, Randy?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Motion passes five oh.
Nope, not really.
Is that one of the three?
Oh, yeah, sorry. That's confusing with another paper, right?
I need the tops, whoever has the tops. And then you need to sign those.
My dad.
My dad, my dad, yeah, he was beautiful. He raised me in leather when I was in college, and I have some of those most college roommates.
I'll have to sign it tomorrow for one of the next.
You got the two other ones?
Yeah, and he went to college in the law. But when he was there, uh, DePaul was my campus. He had a professor trying to throw him out of school, and he said that anybody that just never wrote that ad, happened to be drunk when he took that exam. Cooper.
I didn't make any changes to the elected officials.
This is the elected official, and it's no changes from last year, the mayor, the council members, per council member, and myself. I just need a motion.
Second?
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Motion passes five oh. Twenty-twenty-five thirteen. And twenty-twenty-five fourteen is just how we. Each department is paid.
Hey, give me a second.
Give me a second.
I'll second.
Paula?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Randy? Motion passes five oh.
That one needs to be signed by. I'm just putting it right there on top of the folder. They're probably all mixed up, but it's fine, I'll separate them tomorrow. Okay.
Signature gets worse and worse, the more I sign.
Thank you all. Meeting's adjourned.
Next Monday night, six o'clock.
Next Monday.
See you next week.
Six o'clock.
That should be a while, yeah.
Maybe. You never know.
See you guys.
See ya.